Okay, we're on the air. Before we resume our budget deliberations, we have a short commercial break. One of that, I'm gonna go first, is just to thank the police department. It's through their employee fund that they are treating us to the beverages and the fruit that we have in the back, and we really appreciate it from the police department. And now Brendan Wiley from the zoo has asked for a quick commercial.
Deputy Mayor, thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. As you might have heard the city manager reference last night, there is a unique event at the zoo this weekend that is called Camp Out with Dad. And it's so different than any other of the events that we do. If any of you are out Friday night or early Saturday morning, breakfast on Saturday starts at 6:30. I know the guy that's cooking it, so hopefully it'll turn out good. That's me. But we'd love to invite you just to kind of see the zoo in a whole different manner. It's amazing to see all the temps up, families fishing, just people using that asset in a very unique way. I will follow up tomorrow with an email with the itinerary and my cellphone number because you may need that to get in, so.
Okay. Thank you for that invitation. Councilwoman.
How late can we come?
Whenever you want, we're there all night.
1:00?
We'll be there. You might have to...
She has to bring her own bedroll, though, is that right?
We'll probably be cracking about 900 eggs at that time for breakfast the following morning. That's usually when the magic occurs there.
City Manager, can you give me a cot out there?
Done.
All right, that's too fun. Well, when Councilwoman Ortiz invited everybody to the food truck festival on Saturday, they all showed up, so look out.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other quick commercials? Otherwise, we'll get right back into streets.
Nikki Lee. Number 31 on the Q and A, this is an issue that was broached at the last meeting. It's been an ongoing conversation, so we went ahead and put a specific question on the Q and A, and Doug Whitaker is going to come up and respond to questions and really kind of give the whole answer. But really, the question is asking for a whole strategy, talking about what it would take to fully fund preventative maintenance on our streets and what it would take to fully fund routine replacement. And so what we've talked about for the past couple of weeks is that the half-cent sales tax, we're increasing the budget in 2016 to be able to cover a lot of the residential streets and some of our street maintenance. So Doug's here to talk and answer questions a little bit more about that. Anything that we don't get to tonight, we're getting a little bit into the other funds discussion for next week, but we believe it relates to general fund, that it's something that we could easily spend a few meetings on, so hopefully that's okay with you, that we may be talking about a few other funding sources today. But if that, I think we'll just kick it off with Doug and let the conversation begin. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity. The question was, are we, how would we be fully funded for street maintenance? And just to maybe just clarify so everybody understands what all is included within street maintenance, just some of the major components of street maintenance. That would include street sweeping, crack sealing, pothole patching, full depth patching, where we're going out and fixing sections of the roadway, pavement repairs, some of it's concrete, pavement repairs will be more asphalt related, where pavement, full depth patching a lot of times is concrete related, unimproved alley grading and maintenance in those areas, and then snow removal. And the proposed solution, we sat down to try to put together for you, a proposed solution to accomplish these services, we feel that we would need an additional eight equipment operator positions, and we would look at it, too, and be replacing one street sweeper per year. And where I'm going with that is, is adding these positions would allow us to establish a dedicated street sweeping team that goes out, you know, weather permitting, and they would be sweeping on a daily basis basically our collectors and our neighborhood streets. That team, when I said eight, it actually would be comprised of nine. And what I, just let me explain, that's five sweepers on the street. Two of them are the back type sweepers, three of them are what we call the mechanical brooms. The mechanical brooms can hold so much, so you have to have a dump truck with every mechanical broom in order to keep them going, because at the speeds, I don't think they do much more than 20, 25 miles an hour. For them to drive them back, you wouldn't get very far each day, so you run a dump truck with them to handle that, and then one flush truck, which is basically just helping to keep things wet as they, as they're going down the street sweeping. So that's nine, a crew of nine, which like I said, would put five street sweepers out there. We feel, in looking at that, that we could sweep all 1,500 lane miles in about two to two and a half months, so this would get us about four times per year out there through the area. I know that doesn't add up to 12, but you get into the real cold season, you can't be running the street sweepers out there due to the water, etc., that goes along with it. So, one note, when you get into the fall season with these street sweepers, when I said a crew of nine, if you get into the heavy leaf season, where we got lots of leaves in the streets and like that, actually you could double the number of dump trucks that I need out there, and you'd have to run another, another three at certain times, just because they're filling up so fast with material that if you don't have that second dump truck, they're gonna be sitting on the street waiting for somebody to, you know, get back so they can unload and continue on down the street.
You just said something. I didn't hear what it was.
What? Siri back there didn't understand what you said, but...
Siri will talk back. This, by putting in this eight, I know it sounds like just a street sweeping team, and let me just elaborate a little bit on this so you understand. By having that dedicated team for street sweeping, now I have the rest of the crew. We only have, we have 33 equipment operators within street maintenance. We have a crew of six that work nights, and basically what they do is, they are the ones that, they do stuff basically in the business areas like North Topeka, Central Topeka, and down the Wanam, excuse me, Wanamaker corridor. They will sweep those areas once a month, because they do it in the middle of the night. They work like nine to five, nine at night to five in the morning. They can work in the middle of the night, obviously less traffic, not dealing with all of the congestion in those areas. Others, you know, they could, they'll do pothole patching in the business areas and like that. Obviously, we don't send them into the residential areas for obvious noise reasons and like that, you know, unless there's an emergency or something that they need to take care of. But by having this team, it would then allow us to utilize the remainder of the staff to concentrate on the other maintenance items out there, the pothole patching, the full depth patching, etc., alley maintenance and like that. What's happening right now with the limited amount of personnel that we have is basically, to be very straightforward with you, street sweeping has to be a priority, too, because I have to shut down something else in order to have enough crew members to be able to go out and take care of street sweeping. So you're pulling the pothole, the guys off the pothole patching, you know, full depth patching, alley maintenance, all of those items. And so that's, that's what, that would free us up and allow us to really concentrate on those other services and get more into what I would call a preventive maintenance program rather than the reactive that we're dealing with right now. Question two, as we go on with this, is, well, and let me, I'll elaborate a little more. With alleys, because there were some specific questions, let me address some of the specific areas in here. With alleys, we have, it's over 100 miles of unimproved alley, meaning they're millings or gravel, and then we have about 44 miles of what we call improved alleys. The improved alleys, really probably what we need to do with those going forward, we have, well, let me back up. The, we are allot, I think it's 250,000 of the half-cent sales tax into CIP each year that goes towards alley maintenance. A paved alley can suck up a lot of that money, because basically we have to build a street to replace it. And, you know, it's gotta be almost seven-inch-thick concrete, because we're running trash trucks and like that down the alley. If you, you know, we can't build it any thinner, or it's not gonna last very long at all. We also have underneath it the sewer issues, which then draws utilities in, that a lot of times the reason the alleys are failing is if the laterals were leaking, etc., we got the soft spots underneath, that makes those alleys fail. So we feel that portion of the alley, street, improved alleys, probably needs to really go more with the engineering side. What we feel from the maintenance of street maintenance is, let us have, you know, let us use that $250,000 towards the unimproved alleys, and we have been going out and evaluating, and we're getting close to having all of the alleys evaluated on that unimproved side. But what we have looked at, and looking at my engineering text, is if, part of what we think would help with the unimproved alleys is if we just paved an entrance up from the edge of the street, you know, kind of up into the, into the alley of certain distance, not a long distance, and then we could just grade between where we get that whole idea of you're just dragging everything out into the street every time you bring an alley down, right down to the edge of the road. So that would be what, this would allow us to be able to concentrate on the alley areas. Street sweeping, we've talked about. The curb gutter replacement that you talked about in here, the, again, the CIP portion, the $500,000 there, we feel that's adequate. Just to let you know, we take them on a first come, first served basis. When somebody calls in and says they have a curb, we're entering it into the system. We have all of those logged. We are taking it, based on $500,000 per year, we are taking numbers right now for 2019. We have three-fold, we've got 16, 17, and 18-fold right now that we could, you know, address. Could we, should we throw, when I say add more money to that section, part of it would be is how much can a contractor handle at a time? The other is, is we're looking and evaluating our streets, if we get, especially now that we're trying to get in and work in the neighborhoods, if we get too far ahead, we might be replacing curbs anyways when we go through, so why spend the money on those piece parts now? So we're feeling that that, we're, you know, we're adequately funded there. And so that's, that's the primary, you know, areas of street maintenance. Funding, obviously I've gotta work with finance on this, but what, how we would fund this, at least in 2016, as we would go forward, would, we would either, we would work through with the motor fuel tax and also in the half-cent sales tax to do that, because this is all street maintenance-related items. And so that, that basically outlines that program for you, and, you know, if we're prepared to move forward, if you all, you know, are in an agreement, you know, give the approval to move forward.
Mayor, question?
Could I make one more? This will also help us with snow, because with the additional operators, we would have the equipment to be able to, be able to handle the neighborhoods out there. You know, we would have the drivers, we have the equipment, it would give us the additional equipment operators to do, you know, to work in the snow also. And let me just ask, I'll answer a quick question that came earlier, is, okay, I had the eight basically for street sweeping, what did they do in the wintertime? We can still operate, if it's warm enough, we'll send, we'll send sweepers out at 10:00 in the morning, if, you know, the temperature's above freezing. We do pothole patching, we can work alleys, you know, it's just, you know, unless it's just really that bitter cold, you know, we also, that gives us an opportunity to do training, because we do try to keep our, you know, the best time to train, to be honest with you, is in the down season, because all summer long, once it gets warm, there, they should be out on the streets and the roads, really working on the projects.
Before we take questions, then, you skipped probably an important part of this description of eight new equipment operators and, and replacing a street sweeper. Could you give us a price tag for that?
Oh, sure. That's about, it's about $700,000. And the breakdown is the eight, you know, around $360,000. And then the equipment, a sweeper is about $200,000 plus for that. And, you know, you say one per year, and I've got five, they are expensive, they're highly maintenance to operate, and five years is really pushing the life on them because of what they're doing, you know, because they're constantly, mechanical components are always in constant, you know, tearing up along the street, so it's very abrasive, etc., to the equipment. So that was, that would be about $700,000.
So the $700,000 would be the salaries, the salaries and other benefits for eight people plus one street sweeper a year?
Plus, we factored in there the commodities that would go along with that of the additional fuel, those type maintenance items and like that, because we've got those dedicated out there, we've got to maintain that equipment, so we factored all of that into that.
So we, credit Councilman Jensen for opening this wide up by wanting regular street sweeping. Okay, just to clarify in terms of the text that's on our question and answer before we send it out, what, what the answer in the text says is, "Street preventive maintenance and routine replacements are fully funded in 2016 utilizing motor fuel tax and the citywide half-cent sales tax." Does that mean, then, from what you just said, that they are, they're funded only with that source, or that they are fully funded? Because I'm, it sounds like you're describing that to do the, you know, one of the questions, I think, that was behind this was, do we have enough in the budget right now to do the preventive maintenance and the routine kinds of things that we need to do so we're not sliding back? And does this, is your answer yes or no?
The answer would be yes, with what's in there, because with the additional, and Nikki, you can help me here, with the additional 12 million that we were allotting in, you know, the sales tax to cover the 10 million that we talked about for the neighborhood streets, that would help with the funding between this and the motor fuel tax, we could say we are funded for this year.
Okay. City Manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So just to clarify that point, when we introduced the Topeka Neighborhood Initiative, and the first thing that we rolled out was the, was the street program, and I think there was a tremendous amount of focus on the fact that we would be replacing and fixing streets, but the concept of regular maintenance, preventive maintenance, and repair of those streets is absolutely vital, too, that. So the reason that we put the $12 million into that was so that we'd have the budget authority to address not only, you know, the repair, the replacement, and the maintenance of those streets going forward. So the question, the answer to the question is yes. We anticipated that this was a need. I think the further clarification of this discussion as to what we're thinking about is very helpful.
Okay. Mayor, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, and I think this is a very good discussion, I appreciate it. And I think the background is excellent, and I want to make a comment, and I'll have certainly the finance people to correct anything that I may say incorrectly, but in, and an important point is that really our street maintenance is funded by the motor fuels tax. Asset sales tax is really redeveloping or doing something else, but maintenance is from motor fuels tax. And some of this came on the council in '09, '10, and that's when our, or 2009 and 2010, and that's when the streets were at the absolute worst, and we were totally, it was, maybe Topeka had the worst streets in the state, as people said. And I, from, I, everyone asked why, how did this happen? And the, what I was told was, in the past, the city used to put some general funds into maintenance, in addition to the motor fuels tax. And in order to not have any property tax increases, property tax increased for a number of years, as we, as the needs got greater, we gradually kept reducing the amount of general funds put into street maintenance. Until it got down, we only used the motor fuel tax. Then today, the motor fuel tax is going down yearly, because cars are more efficient. And I've seen those, the record from the state, motor fuel tax is going like this. So it's going, we're getting less funds from the state, and the maintenance is costing more. So I think that speaks to the questions that I appreciate a number of people making. You know, at some point, perhaps we will have to put some general fund money back into street maintenance. We have the half-cent sales tax right now, that's rescuing us. We're getting the streets back up to where they need to be. But then at some point, we have to continue that, or we have to start putting in a little bit each year to get the streets, because that was the excellent comments we heard several times from different council members. And as what Councilman Schwartz pointed out, that is the highest point from the public, is this, actually, the streets saying it over and over, that that's what the public is telling us they see as our high priority. So I'm just saying, maybe this is something we need to be looking at, if not this year, very soon.
Thank you. Councilman Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a constituent who told me, well, the streets are gonna be taken care of because the half-cent county, the county half-cent sales tax passed, and I tried to explain, well, that's not even being collected until, you know, 2018 or whatever. So I think there's a lot of misconception out there with where the money comes from for our streets. We have the citywide half-cent sales tax, we have a countywide half-cent sales tax, we have general fund and all that. So I don't know if you wanna, and on your page 73, you kind of have a breakdown of the funding source breakdown, but it's the county, county half-cent sales tax isn't on here, you say special street tax, but I'm assuming that's the citywide half-cent sales tax, correct? So where does the county half-cent sales tax fit into all of that?
Maybe I can speak to that really quickly. On that specific page, that just shows of the Public Works Operating Department, which funds kick into that. So each of those funds, the one that's on here is the half-cent citywide sales tax and the motor fuel, all the ones you read have something to do with the Public Works Department. The countywide, the current countywide that's going through the end of 16, we don't use any of that for any of our operating, that's money that we get in and we transfer right out to JDO on behalf of the, you know, the Topeka Boulevard Bridge project and other other projects that we identified with that last vote. So the countywide isn't in the Public Works Department, because there's no operating funds related to that, but there is a representation of the countywide budget in the back of the book under other funds. Just wanted to clarify that real quick.
So the countywide half-cent sales tax, there's specific street projects that are listed, I think we had 15 that were named, so that's what that, the countywide, I think that was what the misperception was, was they thought that county half-cent sales tax was gonna fix the streets, and that's not true. I have a follow-up question, then. One of the concerns, and I know Doug and I have talked about this in, you know, especially in street potholes and that type of thing, is that we have a lot of trash trucks and a lot of recycling trucks that go over our streets. I know on our street, we have three different ones come by in one day, and those are tearing up our streets. And I did ask the county, why don't we have one trash truck or one, you know, a contract with just one instead of having five of them? And I really didn't get any good response from that. So I wondered if the city could move forward with trying to deal with the county in having less trash trucks, sanitation trucks on the streets, because those heavy trash trucks are what are doing a lot of damage.
Good question, City Manager. Now you have two to answer.
Yeah, so, well, first, I think, Councilman Schwartz, you got right to the, to the answer. There is a significant difference between the countywide half-cent sales tax and the citywide half-cent sales tax. While they both have something to do with streets, the countywide is limited to specifically the ballot language in terms of those streets. And the citywide, while we built into that plan to do some residential streets, and it was gonna start at a smaller amount of $3 million this year, it, we expanded that very substantially to address the concerns that existed out there. Pretending to the trash trucks, this is actually one of the first conversations that I had when I, even before I started the job here, is can the city do something in terms of franchise agreements that you sell territories pertaining to the trucks, so that you only have one traveling, on my street we have four, that's spread, are spread out over three different days? It's something that we can look at legally, it's something that we can do. I will also say it's probably something that will be unpopular by a lot of people, because their, their trash hauler is very important to them. While it has an impact on the streets, absolutely devastating to the, to the alleys, the damage that occurs in the alleys is significantly related to the vehicles. If this body so desires, we are, we are very happy to come back with a legal analysis on this, and it could be run through the Policy and Finance Commission if so directed, that we could take a look at, at that. It is, it is something we've probably talked about three, three times since I've been here in the last three years.
Councilman Jensen?
So one question we might, that would dovetail into that. So if indeed we do want to allow all these different companies to operate, perhaps we should put a surcharge on them, which again, would ultimately be fed directly to the consumers, for the privilege of having multiple trash trucks, and then use those funds directly to repair the damage that they're causing? You know, again, it's, we have to pay for these, so it's a public choice, we can either have private competition, or we can have a sole source vendor that collects the trash. Either way, we've got to fix the streets, and so if we want to have all these people driving on them, then we need to have the funds for that. So then it's a consumer's choice, either we have options and we need extra maintenance, or we have one vendor and we don't damage our roads that much.
Yeah, and, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think that's a good way to approach it. The key here is not the number of trucks, the key here is to be able to maintain the streets and the alleys going forward, and I think the best approach would be to take a look at how do we cover those costs. It's my understanding that we don't charge a franchise fee to sanitation vehicles when they, when they access the trashless community. So I think it is a good suggestion that we evaluate the potential solutions to this. The key is to maintain the streets, the key isn't necessarily how, you know, how trash is picked up.
Sure.
Going back, excuse me, when we first brought out the fixing the streets, great idea, you guys talked about 22 miles perhaps being done the next year. My concern, when I hear a number like 700,000 being thrown towards maintenance, is that that might mean 700,000 not being spent on fixing streets that might be beyond maintaining. So just to clarify, are we still committed to the 22 miles and the regular street programs as far as repair goes while, or is this 700,000 a redirection of some of those funds?
No, the, this is a comprehensive program that deals with preventive maintenance, repair, and the replacement of the streets.
And just to clarify, that, the 700,000 and the eight positions and the annual replacement was in response to a question, it's not in this budget right now, it's just, that's how much it would cost to do it, correct?
It is in the budget. It's in the $12 million that we included into the budget.
The eight new positions?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, that's why, we did not clarify what would be involved in that, but the plan was that we would, we would address maintenance, and the question that allowed us to clarify how we would do that, which, as we said when we rolled this out, there's still some details we need to work out into this, and it pushed us to clarify that. So Doug went back to his staff and said, okay, what are we talking about in terms of people? In terms of the dollars, we anticipated that, that we would put that portion of the half-cent sales tax money into the budget. It was the concept that we would address maintenance, repair, and replacing the streets. So I think the simple question is, it does not redirect any of the funds that we talked about in terms of the 22 miles that Doug made reference to, but it does provide a further clarification of how we would do that. You know, Doug rolled out the concept a week ago, and we've been working on how we would deliver that in terms of the maintenance.
Confused this point, but I'll go ahead and defer to the, yeah.
Can you explain to me what, how street sweeping maintains the street? I mean, I know it cleans up the trash, but what does it do to help the street?
Well, primarily, is a lot of it is cleanliness, you know, of the street, but also it keeps the, you know, the leaves, there's, there's some debris, etc., that sits in there, obviously it decays, I mean, it can cause, you know, some issues to the street surface, but by keeping the surface clean, keeps the water moving, keeps the water off the surfaces and drains more properly, that probably would be the biggest thing for street sweeping.
Wouldn't it take a long time for a leaf to sit there and damage it? This seems like overkill to me, to clean streets twice, I mean, every two months, right?
Every two and a half months, four times per year is what we're working for.
There's nothing on my street every two months. I mean, I can see, how often do we sweep? There's nothing on my street every two months. I mean, I can see, how often do we sweep them now?
Basically, we're getting through in most cases maybe one to two times per year. Uh, this is just, again, asking, you know, from the standpoint of, um, this is what we're hearing, that people want more street cleaning out there, um, and, and just keeping the, you know, the streets clean, et cetera. So that's, you know, this is what's trying to work together and, and meet those needs. And have the crew, it's not just street sweeping, but also the fact that we've got the head count to be able to, and the operators, to be able to do the other preventive maintenance that we need to be doing out there, the crack ceiling, et cetera.
So if you have, you have five sweepers now? Or six? You'll have five. You'd have six.
We have five. We have five sweepers. We have, probably, six probably total, but one of them, you know, we keep, you know, as a backup and they're all old.
And one crew?
We, well, we don't actually have a crew right now.
No, if, if this went through, you'd have-
We pull them off of something else to be able to go street sweeping.
So you'd have one crew and six sweepers? But you can only run one sweeper with-
No, we would pull, we pull it, what we do is we stop doing pothole patching right now. We pull all of those, you know, crews, the number that would do to be able to operate five sweepers, and then we put them over on sweeping, and so we stopped doing something else. This program would allow us to be able to keep doing both. We'd be able to keep up the street sweeping and continue to preventive maintenance on the streets. And some of that is, is when we look at the maintenance, the preventive maintenance is a key also, that if we're doing the crack sealing, um, and, and alley maintenance and like that, if we're doing that preventive maintenance, we preserve the streets longer. Right now, we're not, we're not doing the preventive maintenance that then just lets our mainly, lets our streets just slide down to the bad condition that we've got because we're not doing anything. So it's still a maintenance program. It's just, it's, it's on the front end to preserve that surface and hopefully get a longer life.
Right, so you'd have some people that could actually do the maintaining, but you'd have this one crew that just does sweeping?
Yes, would do. We'd be concentrating on the sweeping that would keep up with that. And again, to get all of the lane miles that we have, the fifteen hundred lane miles, it's, it's going to take two to two and a half months to get through that, uh, from that portion. But then we would also have those out also still doing crack sealing, et cetera.
But they can only use one sweeper at a time, right?
We can run all five sweepers. When you say a crew, a, a crew-
Oh, so they'd all go-
Yeah, they all go out. There's all five sweepers out. There's, when I say a crew of nine. You know, there'll be five sweeper oper, five equipment operators running sweepers.
And they're all in the same area with the dump truck and the-
Yeah, they would be able to spread out and, and cover different areas, yes.
I don't think it's a bad idea. I just think every two months is a lot.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Gerber, and then we've got a couple hands and we'll keep moving.
I was just going to pick up on something Mr. Whitaker said very quickly. We, we forget oftentimes that our streets in many cases are a primary stormwater conveyance system. And if they're dirty, if they're blocked, then the water doesn't flow like it needs to. It sits there in puddles, it gets into cracks, it deteriorates the, the street material itself as well as the subbase. And then that's where you get your real problems. So getting them as clean as possible, as often as possible, is a benefit to other parts of the city operations.
Thank you, Mr., whichever of you first.
I, I learned a very hard lesson shortly after being elected when my street was swept and I was the guy on the block that had not moved my car. With that said, um, what type of budget do we have for educating the public on the times that we'd have street sweepers coming through, moving cars to one side of the road or the other? So that we're not sweeping half the street because half of it's blocked by people like me that don't know the street sweeper's coming?
Councilmember, what this would allow us by having a dedicated team, we would be able to put out a schedule and communicate with the neighborhoods. Right now, because we pull off and we may go sweep the, you know, tomorrow, et cetera, we just, it's been very difficult to communicate. If we know we've got a dedicated team, other, other than weather stopping us for some reason, we can put out a schedule and we would work with the neighborhoods to put something out that, yes, could educate so they would know we're coming through on such and such a, such and such a day or week or whatever it is.
Guys, I think this is fantastic. This is going to be a wonderful asset to our community. I think Mr. Gerber, you're absolutely right. Getting all the debris off the streets keeps it out of the gutters, which keeps the sewer from backing up. There's, there's a whole downstream effect that this helps. But one of the biggest things it does is start to build neighborhood pride. Uh, if you have a clean street, why not have a clean yard, a clean driveway, and clean sidewalks? It, it helps people to start to realize the value of their home and hopefully start to work backwards. So I think it's a wonderful idea. You are correct. Uh, there is a time where you can clean too much. However, um, the streets throughout our neighborhood are always dirty, even after the street sweepers come, even a month later. So I think they do fill up with trash much more, leaves and dirt and what have you, much more often than we may think. This is a great start. I'm really excited to get the, to see this in place. Scheduling is very important. So I, I too have been in your shoes. My car was there and they drove around and then I was out there shoveling the dirt out of the yard or out of the street because I didn't want anyone else to notice that I hadn't moved my car. So, thank you so much. This is wonderful work.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
I think that's good, but what do we do with the streets that don't have curbs? Like they just have ditches? Is there any money in the budget for ditches to keep those clean? I don't, I don't have a curb. I have ditches.
From the street sweeping, let me answer the street side and I'll let, uh, Mr. Gerber talk from the, the ditch side. From the street side, we actually, with a flush truck, we can actually, because of the ditch, we can use the flush truck with water to kind of at least get the debris, when I say debris, dirt and like that, off of the surface. But then it would go into the ditches and I'll let-
It comes in, it comes in my ditch, you're right.
Yeah.
Then I have to get out there.
Councilwoman Ortiz, there, there is money in the budget for cleaning of ditches. Um, that goes back to the stormwater question that Nikki referred to earlier. Uh, in fact, at this very moment, we have a project going in Thirty-First and Indiana, Michigan area, doing some, some ditch maintenance and smoothing tho, those out so they're easier to maintain and flow better. So those are projects we do on a yearly basis.
Can you give me that dollar amount? And if you can't tonight, if you can provide it at the next meeting, I'd like to know how much money we have in there and how much that covers.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had a little bit of that as an answer to one of the questions earlier. Is that right, Nikki?
We did. For, for example, we have, in the CIP, we have three million dollars towards, uh, some stormwater maintenance projects. We have three hundred thousand in, in another separate area to do some projects. So it just, it really depends on what kind of project it is and what kind of results we're trying to get.
If I may. Well, just like all the recent water that we've gotten, you know, my ditches, they need to have that little machine, you know what I'm talking about, come out and get in the, that little covert or whatever it's called, you know, that goes in my driveway because it, you know, because it fills up with mud and dirt. And then it's, it's, it's flat. It's not a ditch anymore. So that, that's a constant. And I live on a corner, so I get it from both ways. Okay? And, and I just want to make sure, because, because with all the rain that we got, it's, it wasn't flowing like it should have flowed. You know, now, I, I know we just did a big project over there, um, but that's what concerns me is to make sure that it flows like it's supposed to and we have enough money, um, for maintenance and then also projects. Because I know I had to, for the project that was done on Sherman, um, that was way before your time when I talked about it. And then it got done, what, last year? So it, it took, it took a while. So that's why I'm asking, you know, but yeah, when, when they, when they clean the streets and it's, and it's all good. But if you have ditches, you get all of that debris because the machines just push it. So I do keep my ditches clean. So that's why I'm asking.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
I'll be real brief, but I know Keep America Beautiful, Felicia McKee, when I was talking to her about our streets and the ditches and they actually track, they call them storm troopers because it's storm water that comes through. And they really do want to know who out in the community is volunteering to help keep the ditches and the stormwater drains clean. So it takes a lot of volunteers too to work in the neighborhoods, so.
Got another comment from Mr. Whitaker?
Councilmember Schwartz just reminded me of something. With street sweeping, part of our stormwater permit through our national pollution is that we do street sweeping. That is a best practice that should be done to keep those streets because by that, we pick up tons of debris, dirt, trash, whatever it is, and it doesn't enter into the water sources, the stormwater system. So that is another, you know, from a standpoint of our NPDS permit with KDHE through the state and through the EPA Clean Water Act, street sweeping is one of the best practices that you're supposed to do to maintain that and meet our permit requirements.
Thank you. I want to pull this back a little bit though, and key off Councilman Shum's question earlier. Um, you all put in our boxes, um, I guess for all of us, the, the mustard colored book that was, uh, the original ten-year plan when the half cent sales tax came out. And I know that over the last month in particular, I think streets keep coming up and, and there's been a commitment from you all to give us some feedback with a master plan to show us what, what's been done, what all needs to be done in terms of streets and alleys. And then we're talking about maintenance as well. And, um, and so we're, we're, we keep dipping into bits and pieces of it and added streetlights tonight, just to complicate it a little bit more, I guess. But overall, in simple terms, the way things worked in the past was that, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that the maintenance and prevention was done in the operating budget. And then there would be, even in the operating budget, sometimes money for mill and overlay or, or even an expansion of a street from time to time. Then for the most part, the big capital projects were done through the capital budget. And so my understanding in very simple terms was that we got way behind on the maintenance. As a result, the stack of capital projects of rebuilding streets, existing streets, got really big. And so no matter how much maintenance we did, we weren't going to keep up with it. And so we got the citizens to pass the half cent sales tax to, to, to lower this down, to get these streets rebuilt and in good shape so that a reasonable amount of operating money to maintain them would, would be manageable. And so as far as I know, we haven't gotten that pile of neglected streets down yet. And it was the understanding of the voters at the time of the half ten cent sales tax, I was one of them. Uh, but also, you know, we sure talked about it quite a bit when we, we were elected first at that time. And so it was quite the topic of conversation, that it wasn't meant to do routine maintenance at all, that the intent of that sales tax money was to rebuild those streets and alleys, curbs and gutters and sidewalks that had been neglected over time. And that we had such a big inventory, we needed that extra tax to get those down. And so I really appreciate getting that book. And it's a little complicated now because as far as I understand it, we're behind on that original plan. We have popped some of those streets forward into the new countywide half cent sales tax. But my understanding also of the simplicity of that was, again, with the prevention and maintenance in the operating budget typically, and then this special tax to get us caught up was that by about now in year seven, looking, moving toward year ten, we needed to be looking at getting that prevention and maintenance fully funded in the operating budget so that it was always happening. And so it troubles me to talk about using the money that was supposed to fix the streets and growing our prevention and maintenance budget, um, into a temporary source. Because I don't want to set us up to needing to raise taxes in three years because we put operating costs oh, that we A, didn't fix the streets and B, we've got operating costs over there that when that expires, all of a sudden have to come back. Uh, as the mayor said, you know, if we need, I don't know that, that there was, uh, a general fund money years ago, but the motor fuels tax was bigger. As, I, I'm not sure really what the history was, but, and I'm not opposed if, if, if what we need to do is sort of bite the bullet, I think you were saying in Hutch, there was more money out of general fund than motor fuels tax in the street fund. If we need to be, you know, looking with twenty twenty vision at, at what, what we really, what a minimum is for street maintenance and preventive maintenance in this community and then what we'd like to do, like adding as much as you just talked about, but looking at, at, with an eye at it, to have it all in the operating budget side, I would think. So, your idea was to do this new money out of the, out of the half cent side?
I, I have to speak. So last year, we had this very same conversation. We had legal review it. We made a determination that, that, that the use of the, of those funds for maintenance was certainly allowable. Um, this body in, in general supported it. A few maybe not. But we, we've proceeded on building the budget that way. We've also said that, that we understand that there's an end to that. We, I get history. History is important to understand history, but we got to understand the problems that we're facing today.
Understood.
And so given the solutions and the resources that we have today, we felt that this was the best way to proceed. I think this body was supportive of that. So our, we understand that there is a, a general fund requirement for, for the maintenance, but we're not talking general maintenance. We're talking catching up to a lot of deferred maintenance that has not been addressed for years and years and years. And so I think we're trying to catch that. So there's, there's no intent, uh, there's no intent on the part of staff to do anything that, that, then to do what's right and, and provide the best solutions to the real problems, the practical problems that we're dealing with today. If this, if this body says we want to go and not spend any of that money, which is probably in the million dollar category on street maintenance and snow removal, um, then we'll, then we can go back and revisit from a general fund perspective. That wasn't the direction though that we were working with last year, and it's not the direction with which we structured this budget. If we, we want to be able to come back in future years, maybe next year and going on and as we wean ourselves off from this. But to think about our challenges from a maintenance perspective as, as standard maintenance just doesn't give nearly enough substance to the, the very negative impact of the, of the deferred maintenance that has occurred, not just in this community. I want to say this again. It's not just here. It's everywhere. The United States went from ten years ago being the, having the fifth best infrastructure in the country and twenty-five years ago having it in the world to now we're twenty-sixth. So this is, this is a problem that plagues us and this is the solution that we can use to address this. Our infrastructure is not getting better. It's getting worse. And we're trying to take a very, a very strong step, given the resources we have available to address it. And, and the, the, the best way to do that, based on our understanding, is to use the half cent sales tax and to use the motor fuel tax, understanding that it is disappearing. And I'm, to be quite honest, I'm surprised it, it's even available to us today after this year's budget session. So, but they're already done. They'll, they'll forget by next year. So I'm not, I, 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 I'm just trying to put some historical reference to this. And, you know, this, this is not a decision that we made as part of this budget bank process. It was a discussion that this body's had as we've gone forward.
Thank you. Um, and I'll just, I'll just wrap up. I, I was the person who was concerned about moving snow removal from the operating budget, or not the only one, but a person that was concerned about moving it over from, from the regular operating budget to the half cent sales tax budget last year. And my goal, uh, I, I got outvoted, but would be still to move it back as soon as we could. And it just, it makes me nervous. When we talked about the, the ten-year tax at the beginning, the idea was, well, we've got a lot of maintenance costs right now because the streets are in such bad shape. But each time we fix a street, then that preventive maintenance and, and repair and emergency repair is going to, is going to go down. So our need for that maintenance will, will diminish as well. We'll get a, a return on that investment, if you will. And so I, to not fix alleys, I know how many, how many asphalt and concrete alleys are in terrible shape. And if what I heard you say earlier was maybe we just wouldn't fix those and instead work on the ones that are dirt and rock, that money was intended to work steady on both of them as well as the streets. So I just don't want to trade off that repair. And that's just my opinion. Councilwoman Schwartz?
And the good news is, if you look at the twenty sixteen estimated, uh, half cent sales tax revenue was predicted to be fifteen million, seven hundred thousand. And in the book on page seventy-three, it's twenty-eight million. So we're bringing in more revenue than what was thought back in two thousand nine or not?
Uh, that's too much.
Just to clarify, I, I believe you might be referring to the expenditure side of that. Councilwoman?
Okay. The funding source breakdown, special street tax, twenty-eight million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then in the book that we got-
We've accumulated a balance, they, they explained. So I don't think the revenue's quite that much, right?
We-
Correct. We're looking-
Go ahead.
We're looking at a revenue of fourteen and a half million, give or take.
So the fifteen million would be more. So this is not revenue from the half cent sales tax? So this is not revenue from the half cent sales tax?
No, it represents the expenditure.
It would be the expenditures, expenditures that we would have out of that fund and it would, would be funded through new half cent sales tax monies as well as the fund balance that remains in that fund.
That's clear as mud, but that's-
We have a 19, we have a $19 million fund balance that we're going to, we put into the budget, that we could spend that on the things that we're talking about today.
Fund balance from the half cent sales tax?
Yeah. We, as of this, as at this point, we have a $19 million fund balance in the citywide half cent sales tax.
And that's why we can spend $28 million, even though it was predicted $15 million was the revenue? Okay.
Yeah. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Jim, was that because we started collecting like in October or something and then we didn't get to spend it and then it flipped over to the next year? Is that, where, do we, how, where do we get the 19?
I don't know. We spent less than we were taking in. I, I'm not trying to, I don't, I don't really have a specific answer of what decision got made, whether it was a timing thing or that. I know that we got bogged down at one point and, and, and I think we slowed down the projects, but we can give a better assessment than what I'm able to give you right now.
I think that's what it was because I remember the council trying to borrow the money, member, and then we'd pay it back and then council members didn't want to do that because people were wanting us to go ahead and start. As soon as that, they start collecting that money, they wanted to seize, you know, something done and it was late in the year, if I'm not mistaken. But I, I'd like an answer to that, if, if we could get one.
We have also been able to realize some good bids on projects and so they've come in less than, than we originally anticipated with contractors being hungry in the new economy. And so that, that has helped us accumulate some of those funds as well. Specific to what you're saying, Councilwoman, remember, we'll have to look at that and, and get back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy.
Okay. Maybe we can wrap this up. So in summary then, what you're saying is that we can do all that we were doing and you have added all of that in the budget that was, that was given to us in the first place?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? All right.
Good, thank you.
Thank you so much. Good discussion. If people have some residual questions, get hold of Nikki and Doug. Are there any other questions or issues that people brought to the table today? This evening? What's your pleasure? We had enough for today and come back on, we're due to, to come back here on Tuesday evening, the 23rd, from 6 to 9 for our third of three sessions. City manager?
I don't want to elongate the meeting, but you had mentioned maybe the, the idea that, that you had pertaining to the leftover funds on the, on the youth and services grants and maybe the KPA. Maybe this body could, maybe you could present that in the next couple of minutes and knock that out of the park for today.
Okay.
I think it's a good, I think it's a simple thing that could be dealt with.
Well, there's a report that you all don't have yet that is coming from the Economic and Community Development Committee on the social service funding. The, the Cliff's Notes on that report are that the, the committee worked very diligently, went through the allocation process. That is complete, including an appeals process. And so there's a report coming to you. Financially, out of that, there, there are kind of three buckets within that report and, and the, and the recommendations. In part of it, the part regarding emergency aid funds, the recommendation from the group will be to reserve, based on how the allocations went, to reserve about $9,698 for water and sewer bill payments, which had been a priority to the council when water bills were raised last year. And, and out of the contracted services funds, because of some formulas and because of some issues with, with those allocations, there was $8,215 left, which the committee's recommendation will be to return that money to the general fund. I was chatting with the city manager today and with the discussions that we've had about the neighborhood of relations department budget and demolitions and all of the various issues that people have had with code compliance and wanting to improve the appearance of our city, one option that came to mind with Mr. Holtquist's suggestion last night, if you recall. He's part of the tree team and they go around and organize volunteers to do cleanups in neighborhoods or on projects and in, in right of ways. And he was suggesting that we do more of that and suggested that perhaps we even come up with some sort of a plan and do some neighborhood targeting to perhaps really concentrate on a model neighborhood to show what a neighborhood that is fully code compliant could look like in terms of getting all of the, the, the grass and shrubs and overgrown alleys and so on taken care of. And that, that really struck me and it occurred to me that Keep America Beautiful, which is one of our contracted agencies, who does a tremendous job in organizing volunteers and groups to do that. We talked about the idea a year ago, when the IPMC was being proposed, that perhaps a citywide campaign of improving the appearance of the city with working on vegetation might work. So city manager and I were talking about the possibility of converting that $8,215 over to Keep America Beautiful to complete their budget needs so they weren't having to spend time. It would be a council decision to just raise the base for them and it would also leave some money, like a small grant for them to use to leverage to work with neighborhood resources and with us to do a, and with people like Mr. Holtquist to do a community-wide campaign. So it's just an idea to think about. Question?
So we would give them this money to specifically execute this one program of a community? Or would we just give them that additional money to continue doing the good things that they're already doing?
It would be to, it would, it would fulfill their budget and then give them grant money to, to seed money to get that program going in the community. Yeah, specifically for that, a huge summer-long or multi-year program.
I mean, it's a big, it's a big, a big program to get underway, so.
Can I put the bid in for my community?
Sure.
We want to be there, yep, we want to be the community.
Sure. I mean, that's just, his proposal was to start a neighborhood at a time and pick, infect a model neighborhood. Seems like a possibility. So don't have to decide now, it's a new idea. It's out there. Other suggestions, comments? Wrap up comments, city manager?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mayor, wrap up? Anybody else? All right. Well, you already have your agendas for the meeting on the 23rd. We will plan to proceed with that agenda. Again, if this, if this body is ready, we could move toward making our recommendation about the budget by the end of that meeting. So come prepared to do that if you're ready.
All righty.